We'll go into exec session, return as promptly as possible. And for board members with another opportunity to go back into executive session at the end of the meeting, if that's the want and the desire of the board. So I just wanted to make sure folks had that apology and heard me clearly. But with that being said, I will call our May 14 meeting to order and I will entertain motions.
I motion to enter executive. Motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history and tenure eligibility of particular persons.
As well as the superintendent evaluation.
I second that.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Adam. Any discussion, debate? All in favor? That is everyone, Katie and Eldred are currently not in the room. We'll be back in about 15 minutes, you all, I promise. And thank you mightily for your patience. It is a long meeting and we are now returning from executive session back in the public session. And we will go with the receiving and hearing of delegates and I will yield to my colleague. Mara, for the list of folks who have signed up to speak.
And I always forget to talk into the microphone. The first speaker will be Jane Kessler. I did, thank you. Good for me. I did something right.
Okay, am I talking in this correctly?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm a retired ICSD elementary teacher who taught for 33 years. Today, I continue to support ICSD children as the History Center's youth educator and coordinator for the Eight Square Schoolhouse program. Thank you for supporting KDT and for all the important work that you do. I'm here to share my reasons for wanting traditional Medicare with heart.
Oh, just pause for one second. We have tech support.
It's your force field.
Okay. Okay, when I reach 65, okay. For now, I'm covered by the same excellent insurance plan I had as an active employee. This is critical for me. I was an early achiever in the healthcare system. After the birth of my first child, I began to have pain and stiffness in my hands, which was diagnosis polyarthritis. With no referral needed, I quickly connected with a rheumatologist. My symptoms worsened and I was diagnosed with rheumatoid arthritis. Next, I started having neurological symptoms. And then I remembered the bullseye rash that I had had while pregnant. Lyme disease was uncommon here at that time. I made an appointment at a downstate practice specializing in Lyme disease and had multiple imaging appointments at Columbia Presbyterian. I saw a neurologist with expertise in long-term Lyme disease. And after years of treatment, my neurological symptoms quieted and my arthritis continues to be managed with medication. Throughout those healthcare struggles, I was confident about the quality of my health insurance. So my energies could be directed at understanding the disease that was attacking my body, not battling an insurance company. I was never concerned with prior approval for tests or treatments, which would interfere with the successful management of my condition. During ITA negotiations, many of us repeatedly chose healthcare insurance over larger salary increases. We knew how valuable it is and would continue to be. I never considered teaching elsewhere since I was confident I would be able to manage my healthcare needs into retirement. My contract guarantees me this. Please honor this contract and allow all ICSD retirees the option of traditional Medicare with the supplemental G policy that is equal or better than our present health insurance. Thank you.
Next is Carolyn Bell.
Why do I want to shout, "Come on down"? Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak, for your work and for your dedication. My name is Carolyn Bell and I was an elementary school teacher in the district over a span of 29 years when I retired at the age of 57. I hadn't planned to retire at that young age, but work-related stress was affecting my health. And so I retired the June before the pandemic. I gave up considerable income and my passionate teaching career for the sake of my health. One of the reasons that I could do so was the contractual promise that I would receive Medicare plus supplemental health insurance equal or better than the very good healthcare at my retirement. Since retiring, I've worked very hard to improve my health and I'm doing a great job. I'm still not sure what the future will bring, but I do want my health plan to include good coverage should things go wrong. In principle, I feel that our healthcare system should not be in the service of corporate profits. What I have read about Medicare Advantage programs confirms my concerns about its limited providers, need for prior authorizations and denials of care. I realize that you cannot change the mess that is the healthcare system in our country. But what you can do is honor the contract agreed to when I retired and give all retirees the choice of traditional Medicare plus supplemental coverage equal or better than that we had at retirement. Thank you.
Next is Eric Pritz.
Hi, everybody. I do want to say thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. It's not an easy job. It's not an easy crowd. And I think you set a high bar for appropriate public discourse. Thank you. Old teachers never die. They just lose their class. I lost my class. And I am now employed with Discover Hugel Lake, which runs the Floating Classroom Program and the Trout in the Trout in the Classroom Program. And I want you to remember me because I'm going to come and talk to you about trying to get the Floating Classroom Program as part of the kids discover the trail for middle schoolers at some point. But anyway, enough about that. Glasses. I retired from teaching in the Ithaca City School District last June after 34 fulfilling years. I'm speaking to you about the situation of current and soon-to-be retirees around their health insurance. I'm 63. My wife Allison is 65 and still employed by the district. Like many current teachers and recent retirees approaching 65, we still enjoy coverage through Blue Cross Blue Shield policy that has been negotiated with the ITA and the district. Thank you. For Allison, upon her retirement, whenever that may be, and myself upon turning 65, the Blue Cross policy that currently employed teachers enjoy will no longer be available. The district's contract with the ITA states that a health insurance policy, quote, "equal to or better than" the BC policy will be provided. To be precise, the contract language specifies, quote, "In retirement and upon reaching Medicare eligibility, teachers who are participating in the district's retiree health insurance shall be covered by the district's Medicare supplemental plan that is equal to or better than the group health coverage plan that was in place when in active service," end quote. There's no mention anywhere in the contract about retirees being placed on a Medicare Advantage plan, which is wholly different from a supplemental plan. We had expected based on the 2023 experience of ICSD's 65 and over retirees that a Hartford supplemental plan or an Aetna Medicare Advantage policy would be available to us, a choice. Yet the option to select one or the other of these is not now available to ICSD retirees as they become Medicare eligible. Now, in going forward, current employed teachers with the district, like my wife, and recently retired teachers who haven't reached age 65, like myself, will be left with no option for health insurance except for Aetna Medicare Advantage. Both Allison and I see several disadvantages to the Aetna Medicare Advantage policy and see that for our need, it is not equal to or better than the BCBS policy that currently employed teachers enjoy. Yet Aetna's Medicare Advantage policy is now the only option available. We urge the district to reverse its decision to limit those ICSD employees, employees who are approaching retirement, as well as retirees not yet 65. So they too, like the older retirees, could choose either the Hartford policy or the Aetna policy. It is a question of fairness and equity. Thank you.
Colin Doria. Did I say that right?
Doria.
That's what I said, I think.
Thank you. All right. My name is Colin Doria and I'm a parent of two ICSD students, a seventh grader at DeWitt and a third grader at Northeast. I spoke at a board meeting last fall when I expressed my concern that you made a mistake by informing the middle school students that another student at a district had completed suicide without informing their parents. You gave distressing news to our kids, something that actually increased the risk of suicide without giving the parents a heads up. Although you validated my concerns and heard me out, I think you displayed poor understanding of confidentiality laws, FERPA, and in my opinion showed poor leadership by not being able to admit your mistake. That's not why I'm here today. I bring that up because a lot of people still don't know about that, but I'm here today to express my concern about the quality of education. Seems like many people have already brought this up earlier tonight. When we moved to Ithaca in 2012 and bought our house in the northeast area in 2013, we felt so lucky to live in a place where almost every neighborhood had good schools. I mean, it was a joy not to be stressed out about schools. However, I'm extremely disappointed by the decline in academic standards and performance the last several years. So much has changed since we bought our house. My wife and I have been amazed by the poor education our seventh grader is getting. The recent test results are in and they're deplorable. I mean, we now are in the bottom 7%. What? You know, like it's hard for me to fathom that. You know, and I think it's possible to be a progressive Ithacan who shares many of your ideals and also have legitimate concerns and criticisms. I've regularly heard you guys talk about equity and excellence when describing your approach. But I think the test, recent test results show that you're failing in both departments. Abysmal is a more accurate adjective for the word, for how the schools are performing. So I'm speaking today to ask for changes. I've lost confidence in the direction you're taking us in. As a board, you have overwhelmingly voted in favor of an annual extension of a four-year contract of the superintendent and the associated cabinet. Even before the latest test results came out, this boggled my mind. Why would you vote annually to keep extending a four-year contract? That way, even if we decide now that we want to change in leadership, we are still committed to four more years. What world is this? You know, like, can you imagine if any other politician suggested this? Time-limited contracts keep people accountable. I ask you to stop automatically extending the contract for our leaders when the school district is performing so poorly. Real leaders want to be held accountable. Lastly, it would also be nice to know what school board candidates support my opinion regarding this. There are a lot of parents who want changes and will vote accordingly. Thank you.
And we have Kelly Boyko, virtual.
All right, just a second. I might not be able to get the video to work, though. Um, I guess I'll just do it. I'll just do it with, I'll just do it with audio because this is, I have to quit and reopen, so. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Um, so I'm just going to be really brief. I've listened to most of the budget meeting earlier. And anyway, I'm Kelly Boyko. And I listened to most of the budget meeting earlier and I echo a lot of what was already been said. Uh, we've been here for 13 years and I have three students in the district, two at the high school and one's at DeWitt. Whenever we first moved here, we bought a house in Northeast and it was a blue ribbon school. It's not doing as well now and that coincided right about whenever the new superintendent was hired. But I suspect that problem is already running before that. I'm not really sure if it was that administration, the previous administration or the current. That being said, I now have a student at DeWitt and we've recently learned that it's one of the four schools in the district that's rated as targeted support and improvement school. So that's an example of the change over time. Like we went from the school right here in our neighborhood being blue ribbon, that feeds into DeWitt and now that's a targeted for support and improvement. I don't really understand everything that's going on. Of course, there's COVID, but COVID was everywhere. I know that the teachers and staff need support and consistent expectations to appropriately appropriately teach and support the students. But I guess what I want to say is essentially, I want to request accountability at the highest level of administration. I haven't seen things improve at our schools in this time and I don't see a culture of love. Again, this is related to the budget at this point, but do we really need as many high-level administrators as we have? And again, I know we need our teachers, but I don't think we need so many in the central administration. Thank you.
John Crutchfield.
Hi, my name is John Crutchfield. Thank you for letting me speak and thank you for serving on the board. I know it's not easy. I live in Ithaca. I own a house in Ithaca. I rent rooms in that house and I have a small construction business and I'm an over-the-road truck driver. I want to talk about the buses mostly. You know, so as I was listening to the budget meeting, it occurred to me that you guys look at money opposite of the way a business person looks at money. You know, business says, we bring in money. This is what we've got. This is our profit. What can we buy? What can we spend money on? Government and schools look at, what do we want to do? And then they ask for the money in the tax levy. One thing I would like to encourage you all to do, because you are the stewards of the money that Ithaca provides, you are the stewards, you are responsible for that money and how it gets spent. So in this time, which is a difficult time, because assessments are going way up and I heard what you said and that's, that's a whole separate issue. But I would ask that you get creative in how you manage that money and possibly look at opportunities to bring in other sources of income. You got that beautiful new sports field. Can you rent that out? I don't know. You know, are there other ways to bring in money and are there other ways to cut money? Yes, we do have too many people that are, you know, admin staff, support staff. The thing with the buses is I don't think we need to be first in everything here in Ithaca. Like the irony here is that our industry is education, both on the top of the hill and down here, right? So we should be doing everything the best. We should know best practices for everywhere and we shouldn't, we should be operating better than anybody because we should be able to look at the data, look at prior experience and then make our decisions based on who's winning out there. I don't think we should be first with the buses. I think we should drag our feet getting those buses. We should push to the limits of getting in trouble with the state because we don't know how this is going to play out with electric buses, right? We already seen problems with TCAT. There's problems in other districts. The electric car industry is in trouble. It's possible that hybrids become the new thing. So let's not go, you know, building a huge garage, buying a bunch of buses that maybe, you know, obsolete in five years. And there's a whole lot of issues with the, with electric buses, you know? I could just tell you as a truck driver, one of the reasons you don't see big trucks going to electric get is because when you see a truck like Wegman's truck or Walmart, he can pull only 46,000 pounds, just two seconds. 46,000. An EV for a big truck weighs over 20,000 pounds. So now you've just cut all he can pull. So all I'm asking is for you to please continue to be good stewards and think out of the box. Thanks a lot.
Michael Hayes. Yeah, he spoke earlier, but he's on the list and he signed up. Kelly Purcell.
I just wanted to come back. I was here a little earlier because now that things have cooled off, I wanted a chance to talk to you.
Said, "Not really, but thank you."
Oh, well, I do want to start by recognizing how long you've been here and what that means for yourselves and your families and the day you've had before you came here. So I do appreciate your time and listening and I know parts of the meeting before were probably not easy to hear or respond to. And I certainly don't stand behind everything that was said earlier. I just wanted a minute, now that things are quieter, literally, to bring up the three action items that I mentioned to you earlier in hopes that one of you will write them down or multiple members of the board will write them down so that you can discuss them together when you get the chance. Can someone just confirm with me?
I'd actually ask you to send them to the board clerk so we would all receive them.
Get your own words.
Yep.
Okay, okay. I'm going to state them really quickly again, very quickly compared to last time because I assured ICSD employers and other, and other parents and other taxpayers that I would. I wasn't sure which meeting to speak at, to be honest. So I had some challenges and questions for central administration and the board earlier that I'll just state again really quickly. We're asking for clear and transparent data justifying the number of leadership positions you have in the district now and their salaries. The action item that goes with that is we just want you to outline to us how you can actually justify each non-instructional position and their salary if there are cuts and consolidations to make there to help taxpayers or raise teacher salaries. I trust you to try to do that. Number two is how we value our teaching staff, the action item being that you could consider lowering or capping administrative salaries and raising teacher salaries to show that one line of work is not less, more, you know, less important or more significant than another. One part I left out earlier is about other states already having some proposals to limit non-instructional pay, which I can send you. They vary in approach, but you can do things such as capping salaries at a defined dollar figure. You can set that limit at a percentage of your budget. You can tie the cap to what teachers earn. Those are all ways to be a little more equitable when you look at salaries. And then your role of leadership during difficult times, my action item for that being that you attempt to rework the budget again. I do not think this is an insignificant thing to ask of you. But I am asking that you look at what you're asking for in the community when you ask for an increase in taxes and when you try to shift the conversation to Cornell not paying taxes or Albany being involved in, you know, longer, longer problems it would take to achieve. Meanwhile, taxpayers are dealing with the things that they've outlined to you. So thank you for letting me go over that again and I will email you, email Tricia. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm a little confused because earlier when you spoke, I had you listed as Kelly Teeter. And now I have you as Kelly Purcell.
Maiden and married names.
Okay.
I don't really mind which one you use. I would also love
Since you're the same person, we should use the same name. So is it up to us?
You can do Teeter. It is, it is, it would be appreciated if you had the chance to address those things specifically. If not tonight, another time. It's a little bit hard to hear you respond to comments. Sometimes it's just not specific enough to what was said. So again, I just wanted to mention
To email the board clerk. That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia.
And that's it.
That will bring us to board responses and I'm going to do something unusual, which is speak first, which I usually try not to do as the board president. First, thank you for the work of the Eight Square Schoolhouse. I'm a, I've been a supporter, used to serve on the board of the History Center and I think that is one of the best learning experiences that our folks get to do, so I'm very appreciative of that. Eric, I now have a new quote, "Old teachers never die. They just lose their class, classes." That's mine. Thank you for sharing that. That's, that's beautiful as well. To our, our amazing retirees who have dedicated and given so much service, please know at this point in time, there is no easy solution. And with that being said, we've already begun conversations and already have begun to try to explore a resolution. And there'll be ongoing communication. As soon as we can figure more out and what we can share, we will do so. We will try to keep folks as updated and informed as we possibly can. But, and I know this is tough to ask for, but to have some patience with us as we work through legalities, other issues as well, but, but do know the board is moving and acting on that already in that direction. I usually don't speak directly to folks, but I will respectfully, humbly and with grace and love, Colin, I challenge your assessment. And I would welcome an opportunity to have coffee, lunch, whatever works for you. I know we've spoken before, but I'd like to speak again. I think we have vastly different ideas of where we're headed and what the district looks like. So I look forward to having that conversation as well. And to Kelly, two things. One of the approaches that you mentioned was trying to equalize pay. Please know that would require significant renegotiation with multiple unions. So whether the board wanted that or not, may not be what the board is able to do, but there would be conversations and it would take under consideration. And then to rework the budget, should the budget fail, the board would have no option but to rework the budget. If the board, if the budget passes, then this is a conversation for us to have for next budget season. Or let me rephrase that. If the budget passes, this is a conversation for us to have starting right after the budget passes because it'd be a year-long budget process. But I would welcome, please, to send your recommendations to the board clerk and individual board members can respond as they see fit to take place. Other board responses.
I think you covered it. I want to thank everyone and also remind folks, Dr. Brown will, in his superintendent, I cannot talk, I'm sorry, y'all. In his superintendent, I can't say it. Was it right? Sorry, y'all. It is way past my bedtime. Report will be addressing the test scores. So either stick around or check it out online.
And it's more than test scores. It's also attendance.
Thank you.
Any other responses? Students, first of all, thank you. This is a marathon for everyone in the room and it's definitely a marathon for you all. We know it's a school evening, so we are greatly appreciative of your patience and your presence to hear and be a part of that as well. So we look forward to your perspective. And so with that being said, I believe last time we started with Ithaca High School. So how about we start with LACS? And if we could move a microphone around, I can give you one as well.
Okay. So LACS trips are, our whole trips week is this Monday, so we don't have classes. So we don't have classes all of next week. And everyone's going to be on different educational and community building trips uh within Ithaca and with and beyond as well. Some trips like Katrina relief and Spanish trip are leaving this Friday to get a head start um and coming back on the weekend. So that's very exciting for them. Uh sadly for juniors on those trips, that means they can't attend the junior prom this year. Which hopefully next year, there will be a bit more communication between LACS and IHS on that. So that no one has to be put in that position and miss out on a good opportunity.
Uh the bus shelter by the tennis courts that LACS students use to shuttle to LACS is still broken. Um this leaves a number of students without a place to sit and wait for the bus uh and are sometimes exposed to the rain. Uh we really appreciate it if this could be fixed or if there's any updates regarding this issue. So that those students have much more pleasant experience going to school.
And finally, our democratic election for this position as board representatives for next year uh just concluded. So uh Stella, who isn't here right now, will be returning, which is very exciting. Alongside her, Brandon DiPaolo and Emily Isaacs. Who are both very great people. Uh Brandon will be a senior and Emily will be a junior next year. And they're amazing. I know both of them fairly well. Uh they will do this job well.
Thank you, LACS.
Um so an update on construction to IHS, so that's been, well, I I don't know if it's really started yet. There's no like construction up yet, but they're still fencing up, which has been a little bit of a hassle for students because the art squad is blocked off. But um we're hoping that we'll be able to see some construction happening there soon and um I mean, that'll mean that we will have to start going around the fencing again, but uh we we did hear from Mr. Trumble that hopefully there will be actual construction happening there very soon. Um the tennis season recently culminated, which was pretty exciting. Um we didn't go to playoffs after two tough matches against Corning, which were pretty close, but um Aiden won sectional singles and Kieran and Jonah won uh sectional doubles, which makes them both section four, class A champions and both of them will advance, uh both those teams will advance to state qualifiers this weekend, which is exciting.
Hi, um so what's going on at IHS right now for the senior class is that we have a lot of senior events coming up, like our senior trip to the Rankin Field. Our senior prom and of course graduation as well as captain gown distribution. We're also all trying to sort out our absolute final things for college, BAFSA, all the delays and all of that. So I think I can speak for my entire senior class when I say we're very excited and we're very nervous, but luckily we do have um an incredible coordinator, shout out Mr. Jay Barnes um for helping us and for always having snacks in your office. We all really appreciate it. Um in addition to that, IHS is currently in the middle of a very rigorous AP season, which has been hindered by the unfortunate collapse of a light in Bliss Gym, leading to, of course, like having to get it fixed. And due to this, a couple AP exams have ha- have had to be postponed to their makeup dates. And not to worry, it doesn't mean that if a student who is taking one of these exams is sick on that day, they can still make it up within a set period of time. And the school will provide a way for them to make up that exam. Um the exams that have been postponed are AP US history and AP English Lang, I think. In Euro two, and AP European history has also been postponed. The rest of us are finishing up our exams by Friday. I did three, only one more to go. I'm really happy about that. I took calc, it was the hardest one. It should be downhill from there. Um and for the seniors that earned the seal of bilinguism, our celebration is June fourth at the Stewart Park large pavilion at seven thirty, so I encourage you to come check it out because as I I'm pretty proud of us for all that we accomplished. And the last thing is that we are still working on the parking lot and the curbs and the closing of Rosemary Lane with Mr. Trumble. Because those curbs are like kind of murderous for tires. And it's not lovely. Thank you.
Also, just to say about the fencing construction, um so I think you know that all the students go across the grass anyway. Um and and it's just funny that it's all yellow now, that exact path where all the students go within the grass. It's just funny that we tore down the fencing and created yellow grass. Um so the third annual IHS climate action exposition is taking place in five days on Sunday, May nineteenth, from three to six PM on our high school campus. And the event is hosted and planned by students of IHS GO and is completely free and open to the entire community. The expo will feature live music, presentations on various environmental justice topics, interactive activities and more, so feel free to attend. And also an update about the community market. So in April uh of this the last month, uh they served nine hundred seventy-seven people in two hundred sixty-seven households. And they also passed out a thousand two hundred nine snacks to the school community, which is like granola bars and fruit, very helpful. I've seen a lot of baskets. Um and so those were like distributed via the student services, AP officey offices, dean offices. Um and some focuses this month for them was securing more funding and sourcing high-demand culturally-affirming foods. And so if the, if there's any help that the district can give to the program, that would be amazing. And also finally, junior prom is this Saturday at seven thirty um at celebrations. Sorry, LACS. Um we'll try to do better next time on communication.
Last but not least, me, or perhaps least, I don't know. Forgive me if I fall asleep in the middle of this. I've collapsed on my floor twice in the last week um and slept for eight hours, but uh to to go on actual important things. So the recycling pilot program, which I have uh and we all have as a group worked on for the past six months or so. Finally, we got our lids, we got those several months ago and we figured out how to cut them. We cut them in coordination with the tech department. We put them on all the bins around the school district. We hope to collect some data in the coming weeks and hopefully by the end of the school year to have an idea of whether it's working. Uh in my anecdotal assessment, it does appear to be somewhat effective. But you know, of course, we want to check up on that with some data, talk to Mr. Scott Taylor again to see if we can you know, think about how custodial staff is going to work with the new system or hopefully the new system. And maybe next year, expand it to the rest of the school if at all possible. In terms of, I I I recognize that it's late and I have to go soon and you all should probably want to go soon. So I so I'll I'll keep, I'll keep myself brief and but considering that my job is uh to provide student feedback, I will I will do that now. I can't say much, of course, about the budget. I'm not an economist, I'm not a financier and I I sure as heck don't really understand. And mo- most things beyond the, you know, basic explanations given by, you know, the board and that I've been able to research. But what I will say is the one point surrounding student discipline. Uh now, I want to make it very clear, I'm only going to speak for one minute and the opinions that I say are entirely mi- mine only. I'm not speaking for the rest of the reps or for the rest of the school or for anyone outside of myself, but I will say that in my own personal estimation, although I understand that there are a number of issues with suspensions and uh timeouts and that, you know, we, it's not as simple if we want to be an equitable school district as simply throwing out people who aren't cooperating with the system. I will say that in my own experience, I do believe there's been a degradation of discipline at the schools. Um in the the stories I've heard from people younger than me, in the experiences I've had in classrooms. It gets better once you get to higher levels of, you know, academic performance, you know, AP classes and even honors classes to an extent, but in the combined ninth and tenth grade classes, there were enormous issues. I know there are still enormous issues. And you know, we can point to things like vaping in the bathrooms, that people get caught, but the punishments are unclear and not and not even necessarily to the fault of the district always, but not always enforced the same way. And so there's just, I I think, I'm hesitant to say this because I belong to this generation, but I do think that there's a bit of, been a bit of a culture shift. And I think that while some aspects of that culture shift towards, you know, equity and inclusion are definitely valuable. There are problems when we try to extend uh when we, when we try to extend uh principles of safetyism and the idea that, you know, we shouldn't punish people to our schools as well. And I ju- I just don't, from a personal perspective, while I'm not sure exactly what the system would be to replace previous systems of punishment or lack thereof. I can say that I think that a lack of discipline does not necessarily adequately prepare students for life beyond high school. So thank you.
Board responses.
I'd like to thank Leo and Holden for your time. And um we should definitely pass on about the bus shelter broken to, I see Dan nodding his head, Mr. Bryman.
Um as always, I want to say thank you and especially, Gatum. The honesty that you all bring when you come and share is one of my favorite parts of these meetings and what you just shared is really important. And I thank you because we can take that information back as we work on policies and code of conduct and implement and implementation and all of these things. The hard stuff is hard to say, but that's the stuff that's worth saying and I really appreciate all of you for always saying it. Thank you.
Any other board responses?
Just, I just have a really quick thing other than thank you and goodbye. This is not really goodbye. You guys won't be gone quite yet, but um I heard from an apparent just last weekend who I said, what is the, like, they found out I was on the board and I was like, yeah, tell me anything. And they said, could you please open Rosemary Lane? Could you please fix it? I thought that was an interesting, so just, you know, to emphasize that a little, you're not alone in that response. Oh, not whatever the problem was. Obviously. Yeah.
All right. Hearing no other responses, we will continue on with our agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda and we will entertain motions. We fully appreciate if it's time to leave.
Don't get in trouble.
Uh the consent agenda will entertain motions.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
Moved by Morris, seconded by Adam. Discussion, conversation, questions, Joe.
Um I was kind of horrified at the um cost of the Fall Creek repairs. Could we hear some more about that? Whoever. Oh, Amanda, again? Oh, and specifically what kind of insurance settlement, if anything, we're likely to get in relation to the cost?
So just as a reminder, and I know we are pushed for time, I'm going to also try to look up um if the insurance claim information is in my email, but we definitely will be receiving a substantial amount of insurance, you know, back for that. And then state ed, remember, will cover, not cover, but essentially give us the aid for the remainder of the cost back at our building aid in one year because it's an emergency, it's an emergency project. So um the the cost for this, this is all publicly bid. So again, we awarded, um Cindy Dusette spoke a little bit about this at the facilities committee that uh they were going to be looking for uh for bidders. These are the lowest bidders. Um I let me just take a look to see in terms of the insurance, Jill. Um if we have
And Amanda, while you're doing that, I would like to to remind folks in the community that um Dr. Tripp raises a phenomenal question and I also want the community to know that the board did not decide what to pay. The board went out to bid for the repair and is mandated by law to accept within reason right to the specifications of the lowest bidder. So I just want to make sure that folks understand that we are not deciding what to spend on the repair. This is what our contractors came back and said what we can do the repair for.
Right.
Or the amount of money.
And Jill, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my email. I don't want to give you the wrong information. I cannot put my finger on that immediately. So um that either means that it's um filed differently or that when I search for something, it's not coming up and I don't want to be inaccurate.
Okay.
I do know that we were going back and forth because there was a lot of questions about um the work that has already been done, right? We'd had to do some asbestos abatement, we had to do some mitigation of the debris. Um we had to do some cleanup and so that we had to get to the insurance company to know that that piece. And then we had to also work with the campus estimators, campus construction estimators to give them those costs. So um I'm I'm sorry about that, I was unprepared. We, you know, if we want to get this done quickly. Um we can, we can vote on it this thi- this evening. If we don't and we want to wait till finance committee, that also is something that we can do. Um knowing though that that would have to then just wait and I don't know what the schedule is for this work in terms of what campus has planned. But that is always the right of the board to determine if this is something that they want to push forward or not.
I don't recall the specifics of the bid. Is it a simple replacement of the wall that was there as opposed to an expansion or addition?
It's a replacement, except for it has the window. And we were, remember, we were talking about the long lead of those windows. Um and that it would not be a window right away. That window would then come at a later date upon receipt of that. Um you know, that that piece of the build. But that will be, that material specifically will come at a later time. But they assured us that they would secure that opening um and make sure that that was, that was all ready.
You don't remember the size of the window.
Um it was not anything that was, that was large. It was just giving something for like
That's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, we kept it, I think we kept it, let's use the word modest, right? Yeah, that was the only addition to to what you would see in that space.
I'm sorry if you're all worried with facilities, this is great stuff.
Oh, I'm, I finally opened awake, so yeah. Uh facilities is fantastic, which is, I do have my second one. Great question, Joe, thank you very much. Any other discussion items, questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, we will call the question, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented? That looks to be uh all opposed. Fantastic. Thank you all very much. Um that would bring us to a next agenda item, which is the superintendent report, Dr. Brown.
Thank you for making time for me, Dr. Bradwell. Um and it's unfortunate that it's so late because I really wanted to spend my time uh celebrating Claire Park. Um this week I had an opportunity, and we'll do it at the next meeting, uh to be with Senator Webb, Leah Webb, who came to our schools to give uh Claire the youth leadership award for New York State. So um I have pictures and all kinds of fun stuff to say when we're fresher and she's here. But I just wanted to, you know, that would spend most of my time. But now that I have some time, I do wish to, if I may, uh address accountability status. Man, you know, I've been here like y'all for about three hours, listening to folks. And uh I want to preface my uh sharing of some numbers and some data. And also say that I know we're gonna, this is going to be on an upcoming curriculum committee, committee, meeting and a board meeting. We're going to talk about this much more, but tonight I just wanted to uh, since I've been listening for a long time and haven't had much time to share. You know, I I I served as a superintendent before, being a superintendent, I was a teacher, before that I was a substitute teacher. Um and before all of that and through all of that, I've been a human. And I'm struggling with uh the ways in which people can question your humanity and your professionalism without looking you in your eyes or without ever having conversation with you. Um so I think it's on my heart to share that with people and particularly as people who say that and then they leave the room. And I, you know, in in this role I have, I know that comes with the job, the personal attacks and the questions and the challenges that comes with it and I'm uh accustomed to it and expect it. But I have vowed to interrupt when people do that for the young people I serve and the educators I serve too, particularly teachers. So when you come into a space and you don't lead with the assets that our teachers and our young people bring into a space every day, because we've been coming to curriculum committee meetings for the last year, thanks to your leadership, Dr. Grant Weiss. And we've been sharing elements, artifacts and specific data points around tests and all kinds of other qualitative and quantitative measures that we capture in the school district for young people and staff that shows not only are we um doing well, but we're exceeding state and national averages. And we can do that again for folks when it looks, when we look at individual test scores. We look at other qualitative and quantitative information. So I've said to folks, when talking about humans, let's lead with assets first. And when you don't hear folks lead with assets, let's interrupt it. Because I know I serve young people and and educators who are outstanding. And they are doing well and they're on the right path. And for the folks who've been saying stuff like, we're failing or disappointed, they ain't here right now, but I hope you listen to the recording. And then I will lead with areas where we are challenged and where we have challenges. And I'll ask if you will choose to sit in a space with a former substitute teacher, teacher and now an administrator. Let's have, in the smartest town in America, an intellectual conversation about data. And whether or not we're on the right course, whether or not we're doing well or what we're challenged. And I'll ask you now, before we even talk about the most recent accountability status, because it wasn't said from the state, I've talked to folks that stay there, they haven't said we're failing. They haven't said, we're in need of improvement. Some of the things I've heard today, they have said targeted support. And in this particular instance, instance, like last year, we have schools that are getting targeted support for a particular, and I don't like the term, I've interrupted this one too, for a particular subgroup. I like to refer to them as a cohort or a membership group. So when engaging with this dialogue going forward, for the folks who may listen to this that aren't in the room now, let's, one, come to the table with common understanding about what we're talking about. I heard the number tonight, seven percent, the lowest seven percent in the state. Yes, because of the way federal funds are allocated and the way the state identifies schools, yes, we're looking at over the last couple of years, between five and seven percents of schools in our state being identified. So let's hold that number in the most segregated state in America. One of the most. We're identifying the lowest five or seven percent of schools in our state for particular membership groups, cohort, or what we refer to as a subgroup. And now let's think about where I'm from in Virginia and then as you know, throughout the years I've been here, 14, when identifying a membership group or a subgroup, when doing an analysis at the state level to make accountability decisions, you have to have a minimum number of young people in that particular cohort. Some states use 30, some states use 50. Y'all still with me? So in the most segregated state in America, if you're going to come to the conversation with me about the young people I serve and the ways in which we're being labeled or identified, let's know that if we think about 690, close to 700 school districts in the state, most school districts in the state don't have more than one or two schools, but a few have more than one or two schools. We're talking close to 1,000 or more than 1,000 schools in our state, right? If we think about the five, five or seven percent of that thousand, you do the math to come up with a number. And then are we supposed to think about how many of those schools in our great segregated state have more than 30, 40 or 50 young people of color? Period. And let's drill down even further, black students. Come to the conversation with your data. I'll bring mine too. So when thinking about identifying a school district for needing targeted support, well, let's say the subgroup we're referring to, subgroup, black students, let's think about how many schools in our state would that be? And you do the math and think about how many would that be to get to five or seven percent of the overall number of schools in our state? Now, in no way I want people to see and hear me say this is an excuse. Frankly, I'm welcoming the targeted support because it comes with funding and a conversation about what's been happening for generations when it comes to black students particularly. And this is one black student who has been told throughout my life that I'm a disappointment and a failure. I'm, my school's failing. I'm showing up poorly in the data. I'm done with that. See me for my gifts. See me for the athletic participation, co-curricular, the instruments I play. See me for the joy and the brilliance I share with you in other ways. In addition to or in spite of, and if you look at the numbers here, of the number of tests that our young people in that subgroup actually even took. Now, we're talking about opt-outs, pandemics. We're talking about a lot of other things we can layer on top of that. But if you're going to come in here and refer to my students and our staff as being failures, let's come to me with accurate information and a love for humanity first, and then let's debate. Again, please hear me, this is not personal because I've been reared to take the personal attacks and criticisms and questions about my integrity and my career. That's what I have been reared to take. But my young people don't deserve that. And if you come to the conversation and engage with me about whether or not we're on the right track or not, make sure you know what you're talking about. Because as we showed over the last year, Dr. Grant Weiss in your committee, we're producing equity and excellence at the same time. At a rate that's better than most school districts in the country, not just in our state. And take that and then let's debate whether I'm wrong or not. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about it and I'm sure we'll engage in this conversation much, much more.
We look forward to the extended conversation, Dr. Brown. Thank you very much. We are going to move on to school district business. And I'm going to yield to the chair of the policy committee, my colleague, Moira Lang.
So we are going to look at policy 4700. And so I would entertain a motion regarding policy 4700, independent study for second reading and adoption.
I'll do it. I move to approve policy 4700, independent study for a second reading and adoption.
So I believe Ms. Telkot is going to come down and speak.
We need a second.
Oh, sorry.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Katie, because that's who I heard first.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Really Telkot. I get to serve as the deputy superintendent for the school district. This policy, as I spoke about a couple of meetings ago, was developed in a conversation with some of our secondary leaders and in some collaboration with our Ithaca Teachers Association folks and our attorneys. We are required by New York State law to have an independent study policy and we have Ithaca-ized it in order to meet our specific needs.
And since we saw it last time, have there been any changes?
I don't believe so, although I was not at the last policy meeting, but I did not hear a report that there were changes.
There were not any changes.
Great.
Can, my, yes, you concur. Thank you.
Then I remember at 9:00 AM tonight.
Impressive. 9:10.
9:10.
Katie.
Let's be accurate. Okay, so are there any questions or? No. So.
That I have no notes of any changes.
Okay. And so it has been moved and seconded and I'll call the question. All in favor? That's everybody? And are we all still here?
Yes, we are.
Nobody's asleep under the table and not able to vote? Or sleep sitting up? So the next item, I am going to make a motion to table policy 5111, layman alternative community school enrollment and admissions for a second reading and adoption. I'm going to table that policy in order to allow time for us to get some feedback, suggestions that came up in a discussion of this policy at the LACS Site-Based Council. And so we're all, we will take some time to look at that. They're going to pass them on. And we will bring it back to the next, my motion is to bring it back on May 28th meeting for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? It's everybody.
Thank you all very much. That brings us to agenda item 11.3, proposed changes to the 2023-2024 academic calendar. I want to thank our board clerk and Emily Tracy for sharing with us the let's talk feedback. If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I think I read 79 pages with not a single comment against this proposed change. There was 79 pages all in favor of this proposed change. I don't think I've ever seen that in my life. But it seems like it is widely supported by a number of folks in various communities. And so I don't know if we need to speak to it, but the, and since the idea is to make June 25th the last instructional day for students and June 26th would be the last work day for staff, with students would not be in attendance that day. So it would give our staff and our teachers a day to decompress and pack their classrooms and do, and celebrate before being real. Celebrate a school year, so.
And just for clarification, I would add, it was scheduled to be a half day for, the 25th was scheduled to be an elementary or pre-K through five half day. And now it will be no half day. No, pre-K through 12 will be, that will be, okay. Oh, no, I got it. The pre-K through 12 was going to come in for a half day on the 26th. Now, that half day for students is being, it's proposed to cancel that.
So we will entertain motions.
Okay, I move to approve the proposed changes to the 2023-2024 academic calendar as presented.
I second.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Karen. Additional debate, conversations, questions?
Are we still have enough hours in the classrooms for those affected grades?
That is correct. We are using unused snow days because we had no snow. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Fantastic. And our last agenda item for this evening is agenda item 11.4, a resolution to approve expenditures for the 30, yep, for the 37th Annual Small City School District Conference. And as you can see here, the folks who have requested to be in attendance are myself, Moira and Eldred. We will entertain motions.
Well, I shall. I will move to approve expenditures for the following board members to attend the 27th Annual Small City School District Conference in Albany, New York. Sean Eversley-Bradwell, Moira Lang and Eldred Harris.
Andy seconds?
Second.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Erin. Questions, debate, conversations, Karen, yes?
We have 37 and 27 then. Which annual is it?
That is a great question. I can tell you. I think it's the 27th.
34?
Hi from Emily. It's 37th.
In the spirit of tonight, when expenditures like this are up for vote, but we don't see a number beforehand, how are we or the general populace assured that we're not just gallivanting? I know that the conference will be very austere. And you'll learn so many things that are only for the benefit of the board, but I mean.
What does austere mean for those who are?
Means you'll have no fun and you'll be very cheap.
I assume they're sharing a room, for example.
No, 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 that's, that's.
No, it's.
37th and we can tell you, I, I'm not sure if we have the information about exactly what the cost of the conferences, including lodging and moves.
We don't have it.
Asking for it now, but maybe. You know, if we're asking for approval on an expenditure, we know how much I'm approving.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the information we got, the invitation to this was very vague. I mean, it really didn't have any specifics said, once you registered, you'd get specifics. And we can't register until we get approved. So it's a little bit of a circular thing.
Costs is not disclosed before you register.
I don't believe it was.
But I mean, in general, it's good to know.
It usually is.
A hotel room is provided and if a board member drives themselves, there is a mileage reimbursement.
Right, and the cost of the, the conference. Right.
And those reimbursements are per diems, that are standardized per diem, so.
Yeah. Yes.
And there is a budget for the board that also, that's where we're purchasing. Okay, but the policy does not dictate that we receive maybe itemized estimates of costs before we vote on it.
Something that can be looked at in the future, without question. And I'm looking at the website now and it does not show what the, right, what the registration is. It's right, it's, it's, it's the New York State Association of Small City Schools.
I mean, it is Albany in June, so it's bound to be like luxurious and balmy and.
Austere.
And those audit reports are public.
To that point, I meant to say that earlier today for folks who have questions about the transparency, to realize that there is independent auditors as well as in-house auditors. So we get audited multiple times and everyone is invited to what is quite possibly the most riveting committee we have, which is audit committee. But, but Katie, to your point, we will add that question to a future policy agenda if we can, Moira, just to consider.
Yes.
Does that look like for additional things, which also includes trainings and also includes other trips that folks take, legislative advocacy, you name it. So thank you for raising it.
Question, what, what looks like? What do we add into a future?
If there is a way in which to indicate the costs of, of, right.
When we approve.
Rebursements and all and mileage, everything's provided.
Right.
And it's in the policy.
Right.
But here we'd be looking about what is the cost of registration? What would that look like?
I was just going to say that we usually add that.
Yes.
Previous, previous, previous board agendas, you would see the expenditures and the, you would see the expenditures, but in this case.
We didn't know it. Right. Because I mean, the last one that was approved for that policy training was the dollar.
And there's, we are putting it on for this because there is a deadline before our next board meeting.
Right.
So additional questions folks may have, we, we have some action steps to take. But additional questions?
Do I have to read it again?
No, you don't. Well, 37th, let the record show that Adam said 37.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, mentee. All in favor? That is unanimous. I want to thank everyone for still watching and for being here. Thank you for your patience and we will continue to grow as a community. Have a good evening.
Appreciate you.